Kia ora koutou, welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome colleagues and staff, the public gallery and priests. Before I invite the retired Reverend Greg Hewson to open our meeting, I would like to publicly and formally acknowledge you, Greg. Twenty years of chaplaincy at the university and providing spiritual and pastoral care to generations of staff and students, of which I have been the grateful recipient. So, thank you. And also, for as long as, we tried to figure out, but for as long as anybody in this building can remember, has also organised the roster of interfaith practitioners to come and speak before the opening of council meetings, weaving in our broad spiritual community to the work that we do here. So, thank you for that. Enjoy your retirement. As someone who has chaplaincy in the family, I'm aware of the degree of sacrifice and commitment that's involved in that. So, thank you for your service and I welcome you to open our meeting.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you for coming to my farewell a week ago today at the university. I'd like to read a short passage from the Hebrew scriptures, Micah, chapter six, verse eight. "God has told humanity," that is, all of us, "what is good; it is to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your God." So, I'd like you please all to be seated. As Aaron mentioned, I've been privileged to be able to organise interfaith prayers for many years through our Dunedin Interfaith Council, and I speak on behalf of the Dunedin Interfaith Council today. I was privileged to pray here last during O Week at the beginning of this year, and at that time, we were not to know what was going to happen in our community and in Christchurch soon afterwards. In March, the Dunedin City Council and staff responded with amazing professionalism to organise a huge vigil at the Forsyth Bar Stadium to show the support of our entire community for our local Muslim community, when our whole nation was in shock following the terrorist attacks in Christchurch. I was privileged to work alongside many council staff at that time, to prepare for and to pray at a vigil with 18,000 people present, a night we will never forget. Well done, Joy Gunn, Mia Kau and all council staff and councillors. Who knows what the DCC will be called upon in the future to organise and coordinate in addition to business as usual? As a member of the Dunedin Interfaith Council and a Dunedin community member, I would like to thank you all for putting yourselves forward for election, and I gather this is your third meeting. My prayers and the prayers and thoughts of thousands of people in our community are with you today and on into the future, as you represent us. May you do all you can through your term to serve our community and dare to be wise. I'm privileged to know many of you, and I know you have the best interests of our community at heart. So, kia inoitato, let us pray. Etiatau te puna, otiaroa, God, the source of love, source of justice and of new beginnings. We give thanks, loving God, on this beautiful day for this opportunity to pause before this council meeting. Here in this council chamber are people who care, a very diverse bunch of people who care enough to put themselves forward to work together for the healing of our community and for the healing and preservation of the land which sustains us, Papa Tuonuku, Mother Earth. People who want to work together to create a city where the poor experience transformational care, a city where the poor and the oppressed are enabled to overcome barriers and live well, a city where poverty and pain and grief are ministered to and relieved with love and compassion. May this council work harmoniously together, may they work effectively for justice together, for social justice and for ecological justice, and may they love kindness. May kindness be their default attitude towards each other and to their staff and to our planet. In spite of considerable diversity of personalities, may this council walk humbly together, aware of their limitations and aware that they need each other, aware of when they are out of their depth and need to ask for help. Thank you for the recent injection of significant finance into our community. May this money be spent wisely to enable life in all its fullness to be the experience of all people. Bless this new council, I pray, help them to dare to be wise in all their deliberations this day and every day. May this council wisely manage the resources of our planet, and may they be wise stewards of the creation we all indwell alongside the hoi ho, the lizards, the deep stream catchment and the deep creek catchment and the many intricate ecosystems which sustain us. May justice, kindness and humility be evident here and in all our dealings with each other. Amen. And I have a calendar, it's a religious diversity calendar from the Interfaith Council, there's more copies available if people would like them, it's a national resource with all of the special days for all of the different spiritual and religious communities in New Zealand, and I'll give a copy to Aaron and to Sue.
Thank you. Kia ora Greg, thank you again for your service and your ministry, both of which I'm sure will survive your retirement. Well, on to the meeting proper, we have an apology from councillor Benson-Pope, I'll move that the apology be accepted, second to councillor Elder, all those in favour, those against, that's agreed. Confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that council confirm the agenda with the following addition and alteration with regard to standing order two, no, the relevant standing order. Option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments, second to councillor Gary, all those in favour, those against, that's agreed, declarations of-
One question, please. Sorry, just a question regarding the option C. Are we going to be making a habit of including this in every meeting from now on, or is there any opportunity of actually just standardising it?
I certainly hope not councillor, the intention is to do a review of standing orders in its entirety in the new calendar year, which would be the opportunity to look at whether that is the standard format we want or whether the other options are more appropriate. But it's been a while since, I think, any of us have gone back and checked them, so that would be the appropriate time to have that discussion, I think.
And is it your view that the option C is the appropriate one, or do you have an alternative view?
To be honest, I haven't gone back and looked at it since we approved them three years ago, so that's certainly on the agenda for-
Thank you.
-so to speak, in the new year. Declarations of interest, I'll move, are there any amendments to make to the interest register? In that case, I'll move that council note the elected members' interest register attached as attachment A confirms the proposed management plan and notes the executive leadership team's interest register as attached as attachment B, a second to councillor Gary, all those in favour, those against, that's agreed. Part A reports, item six, temporary alcohol ban around Forsyth Bar Stadium, Mr Pickford, Mr Meachan, welcome. Any comments you would like to make in the beginning, I'll take it as read. Questions councillors? I have one, oh, sorry councillor Staines, thank you. I have one just for my own clarity, I suppose. As drafted, the intention of staff is that this wouldn't ever be imposed without the request of either the police, DVML or the event organiser, regardless of who was organising the event and how many attendees there were.
The idea was, or the purpose of it was, if the event was expected to host more than 10,000 patrons or the AUSA arranged events, and the reason that AUSA arranged events was inserted was because they had asked for them when they've only had about four, four and a half thousand for orientation.
But it would only be on request, the request is the overarching trigger. So, if a request comes through, it's either 10,000 or greater, or whether it's less than that, but there is a perceived risk around alcohol consumption close to the stadium, then that's when it would be triggered.
That's fine, thank you. And my second question was just around, the Forsyth Bar don't aim the naming rights to the venue in perpetuity, so were the naming rights sponsored to be different, would that make this null and void? That might be a legal question, or is it something we're better off revisiting at that point?
It would be dealt with at the review of the bylaw, and it's Dunedin Venues Limited, Management Limited that we've got named in the report, not Forsyth Bar Stadium, but the stadium is the focal point.
This is Forsyth Bar Stadium in the resolution, but that's fine, we can deal with it subsequently. It's been moved, councillor Staines, second to councillor Hall, is there any discussion? Councillor Staines?
There is a small amendment in the wording of the resolution, so it shall only be implemented. So, the word "only" only has been added.
Are you-
Just to make sure that it is only when it's asked for.
Oh, thank you, I have, and that says only in my version of this.
Yeah.
Oh, my apologies. So, for clarity, that is what it now reads. And the first part of it says that council approves a temporary alcohol ban be imposed in the area bounded by Albany Street, et cetera, and then this is the second, are you comfortable with it? Councillor Hall, are you comfortable with the amended wording? Any discussion? Councillor Lord?
There's two areas, there's the area around the stadium and the area that covers right up to View Street and that area, so these two separate areas, are they both automatically clicking together?
The area that takes in the central city up to View Street is the permanent liquor ban, the secondary round Forsyth Bar Stadium's only for temporary bans.
Any discussion? If there being none, I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, that's agreed, thank you. Item seven is councillor appointments to outside organisations and other appointments, and I note there have been some changes to that which has been circulated on the agenda, or at least I'm proposing some, that with regard to connecting Dunedin, myself, councillor O'Malley, councillor Benson-Pope and councillor Walker, through their roles furiously in the Planning and Environment and Infrastructure Services Committee be appointed to that group, that the Road Safety Action Plan, council be represented on the Road Safety Action Plan by councillor Raddick, thank you, and that at this point, there's no need to appoint a councillor representative onto the Predator Free Dunedin group, which was to be myself. Are there any questions of those changes? If being none, I'll move that council approve the councillor appointments to outside organisations as proposed in attachment A excluding Predator Free Dunedin, approves the appointment of councillor Vandivers as chair and councillor Benson-Pope as a member of the Dunedin Heritage Fund Trust, and notes the appointment of councillor Lofeasaw as deputy chair of the Grants Subcommittee, approves the appointment of myself, councillor O'Malley, councillor Benson-Pope and councillor Walker as members of Connecting Dunedin, and approves the appointment of councillor Raddick to the Road Safety Action Plan, seconded councillor Walker. Is there any discussion? Councillor Gary?
Just one small point, in item seven, it talks about councillor appointments of external representatives to outside organisations currently being reviewed and will be reported back. I do think it's really important that when that review takes place, we look at what the roles actually mean, because they vary considerably between formal trustees to representatives, and also that we describe really carefully what the role involves in each case.
Work well made, thank you. And that will be done as part of that review, councillor O'Malley?
Tell me a question about the Connecting Dunedin membership and the role of Connecting Dunedin, it's primarily a transport group rather than the planning groups, I'm wondering if, absent the councillor Raddick, rather than, I know we're not really a discussion point on this, but I mean, Connecting Dunedin is NZTA, DCC and NIOC as it relates to transport, is it not?
It does, although it is noted that a significant part of the work in our transport network is, and the challenges we have and the interface between those two, those organisations and the transport network relate to directly the work in the central city, particularly around the hospital rebuild, the central city plan, et cetera, and so it was felt that having representation from the planning committee alongside infrastructure services would be helpful, given the significance of those projects. Further speakers?
Would safety be a part of that? Road safety be a part of the planning? If I'm going to be on the road safety, perhaps I should also be on the planning.
Is that discussion councillor Raddick?
It's a question. Do you think if I'm on the road safety committee, should I also be in the planning committee?
I'm comfortable with the recommendations. Other discussion? If being none, I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, any abstentions? That's agreed, thank you. Item eight, notification of variation one, minor amendments to the proposed Dunedin Second Generation District Plan, more commonly known as the two GP, Dr Johnson, Ms Pinfold noting that councillor Gary and councillor O'Malley are sitting back from this item in their capacity as hearings commissioners and councillor Hall is an interested party. Welcome, it might be helpful in the first instance to talk through the process around this for councillors less cognisant of the RMA functions.
Okay.
Point of order?
Point of order?
Your worship, given that you have been a commissioner on the two GP, is it something that you would consider in terms of sitting back from this as well?
No, the reason that councillors Gary and O'Malley are sitting back is that we will need hearings commissioners to hear submissions on the variation, and so they're withdrawing from that as per their function on the hearings committee, which I no longer sit on.
Okay, but you don't feel that you have a conflict in terms of particularly the signage issue that has come up in this particular variation?
Remind me, what's the point of order?
The point of order was, do you believe that you are unconflicted as chair in presiding over this particular item?
For the purposes of sending something to notification, no, nor is that a valid point of order. Dr Johnson?
Okay, I'll try my best to explain the process, sorry.
Excuse me, your worship, are you indicating by councillors Gary and O'Malley sitting back that the other RMA commissioners should sit back as well?
They would be welcome to, but my understanding is it's a direction that has come from the chair of the hearings committee.
Oh, I guess I'm not, okay, I guess I'm not in favour.
You're always welcome to sit back councillor Wiley, should you choose to.
Okay, I'll try my best to start with explaining the process and also talk specifically about when councillors, if they want to be involved in the process in terms of making submissions, how that works. So, the reason that this is coming to council today is that the delegation to notify sits with council or the Planning and Environment Committee. So, the notification process is really a formality to allow us to notify the plan and open it to public submissions. This process is a full public process, so it's not limited, so anyone can make a submission, however, the submissions are limited to the scope of the matters outlined in the variation, and because this variation has got a specific purpose to correct minor issues, there are some clear statements in the report that discuss that scope and the problem that the amendments are being proposed to address, so people are limited to submit on that problem and what's stated there with the scope. Obviously, one of the matters in there is to do with election signs, and so there may be elected members that have a particular interest in that, and like any member of the public, they have the ability to submit on that. I spoke earlier with our legal counsel, before the full notification of the two GP, we did have some legal advice that was circulated to councillors at that time about conflicts, and I'm more than happy to dig that out and recirculate that to anyone that's interested. But essentially, if somebody chooses to submit, they therefore cannot be part of the hearings panel, hearing submissions, which is probably quite obvious. They may also decide to step back from the final step, which is the approval of the variation, which is, if you're interested in the RMA, it's clause 17 of schedule one, and this allows council to approve or not approve the variation after decisions are made by the hearings panel. In practice, these are always approved. Rachel Brooking, our legal counsel, could not think of a single example where it hasn't been approved, but of course, there is the option for a council to not approve the changes that are made through decisions of a hearings panel. So, other than that, it's very similar to our normal plan change, there's a submissions process, the submissions are summarised and published, there's then a step where people can make further submissions on those submissions, saying they either support or oppose what people have sought through the submissions, there's then hearings for anyone that wishes to be heard, the hearings panel makes decisions, and those decisions can be appealed to the Environment Court. Just highlighting what you're being asked to do in this report, you're being asked to approve for notification to start that public process, you're also being asked to note that the report is in a draft form as marked and to authorise the CEO to sign off on minor changes. As we discovered with the election signs rules, there are a few little errors in there, we are working very hard to get this out before Christmas. We also are very busy with appeal, so it's a bit of a stretch for the team to manage both processes, and we have tried very hard juggling the two and to get this out in time, because a number of the changes are important to our consents team, for clarity, there's also a few changes that will remove unintended consents getting triggered because the rules aren't clear, so that's good for everyone, that doesn't have to apply for consent when we didn't intend them to. So, we are keen to get it out in that period, but it was a bit of a rush, and there's a few little errors, that we're doing a sort of a third review of the whole document to make sure it's word perfect, and so there may be some corrections that the CEO will need to authorise. That's my summary.
Thank you, that's helpful. Questions? Councillor Vandivers?
When the original two GP was put together and the issue of signage came up, did councillors Hawkins and Benson-Pope declare a conflict? Did they sit back?
In what process are you-
The process of bringing in the changes to signage, which were quite dramatic in terms of allowing the kind of signage that councillors Hawkins and Benson-Pope used to have at elections, but disallowed the kind of signage that I had in many previous elections.
Well, okay, so there's the content that was notified, so what went into the notified plan, I don't believe there was any councillors that were involved in that process, I believe that was entirely staff that worked on it, there were some topics ahead of the full review of the two GP that we workshopped in a general sense, I could go back and double check, but I do not recall that election signs at all would have been canvassed through any consultation with elected members prior to notification. In terms of decisions, there was very few submissions on that, and they did not sit back from those submissions, nor were they required to, and I don't believe that the changes made in those submissions, I think possibly made them more liberal, but I could supply that information.
So, you're confirming that in fact councillors Hawkins and Benson-Pope did not sit back during the process when these new signage rules, which badly affected my ability to do my usual election signage but didn't affect theirs, they didn't sit back during any part of that process?
Councillor Vandivers, I don't think it's appropriate to ask staff to comment on the efficacy or otherwise of your political campaign.
I am not asking that, your worship, what I am asking is, did yourself and councillor Benson-Pope recognise the conflict of interest that you had going through election processes in changing the rules for signage, which didn't affect your signage but adversely affected mine?
I think you've misunderstood what I've said, there was no councillors that were involved in determining the rules that went into the notified plan, so there was no process in which anyone needed to step back because there was no engagement with councillors. And I think that the concerns that you had were related to the notified provisions as they went into the plan from staff at the time of notification. My understanding is that this, I think there was one submission from David Clarke's office on, two, that were, that there were decisions on, and they did not restrict the signage rules further, in fact, I believe they liberalised them.
Well, that's not the case, and in the case of my signage, they were severely restricted to the point that I was having to actually redo my entire campaign because I could no longer do the kind of signage that I had in several elections prior.
Councillor Vandivers, like any other resident, you had the opportunity to submit on the rules as notified, were they dissatisfactory? And the limited number of submissions on that limited the scope that decision makers had and what the proposed two GP ended up looking like.
And, your worship, like every other resident, I had absolutely no idea that these changes were being brought in, and as an affected party, I believe I should have. But that's water under the bridge, we now have a different, and I thank you for clarifying, basically, what I understand, Ms Johnson, you're saying is that these changes to signage rules that so adversely affected my campaign were actually brought in by staff and that they weren't actually actively looked upon by either councillors Hawkins or Benson-Pope.
It's Dr Johnson, and again, I don't think that's an appropriate question to be asking staff around whether things adversely affected your campaign or not.
I was just seeking clarification from Dr Johnson that the changes were staff-produced rather than commissioner-produced, that is to say, yourself and Benson-Pope.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, I appreciate finally getting to the bottom of that. That's my questions currently, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hulane?
Hello, can I clarify please, around signs of the size of the wording, because I've just been told that my signs, the wording was too small. Now, my signs, quite a few people might remember, were a bit larger than a lot of people, so if that's the case, that means every councillor here, all their signs were undersized, can we just clarify that?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with different signs and the lettering, but I can explain the minimum font size, Alan can talk about any issues that came up with the signs, but the minimum font size is related to NZTA guidance on enabling signs to be easily read by passing motorists, so they don't slow down and cause a traffic accident trying to read the sign, so that's where that font size comes from.
I would just add at this point that questions of the conduct of the election just being are questions for the electoral officer and not questions for planning staff. Today, we're being asked to approve a variation to the second generation district plan, which again will provide anyone- again will provide anyone in this room with the opportunity to make submissions around how election signs are managed in the future. Mr Wellington, are you being summoned?
I just wanted to question about the signage size. Our experience with election signage was, there was a large number of them were having smaller font size than was required by the plan, and I can't remember specifically what yours were like councillor, but that was a common theme across most of the signage.
Thank you. So, does that mean we can't use those same signs again?
If they don't comply with the rules once it's gone through this process, then that's correct.
So, if we sign off and agree, approve to these changes today, then that means we can't use our signs again next time?
No, I think it's, I'll just clarify the change. So, the variation, I suggest that you read what's being proposed. It does remove the font requirement around the authorised aspect of the signage, but if you feel that you would like to influence that, or I suggest that appropriate process is through a submission, that is, the correct process to try to seek a change to these provisions beyond what is being suggested through this variation.
Thank you. I have read this, by the way.
Councilor Alder.
So, is the intent of larger wording to do with people peering at signs and having an accident? What's the story behind it?
That's my understanding. It comes from NZTA guidance. I haven't read the background research that informs that, but I, that is my understanding.
Council of Vandivers.
Dr Johnson has suggested that the correct procedure would be for any councillors that are not happy with the minimum font size rule that's about to become law, to make a submission. Are we also able in this meeting now, if there is a majority of councillors who would like the font size issue to be deferred or simply to be eradicated, would we be able to make that decision here legally now?
Well, I think, this is a question, I think, the decisions are what's outlined in the recommendation, it's to notify the plan or not to notify the plan. You could say, we don't wish to notify the plan at this date, we wish for staff to go back and re-evaluate the options around election signs or to ask staff to remove that particular change from this variation and notify the rest and ask us to do further work. The requirements in terms of preparing a plan are outlined by section 32 of the Act, and they require staff to conduct an evaluation and to report on that evaluation, so we're not able to just make a change without having gone through that process, but certainly we could consider a recommendation if you said we'd like the election signs changes to be removed and we would like you to specifically consider the option of, whatever that option is, we can do that.
So, we could do an amendment to the proposed variation now, which says we agree with the variations, all the other things, but that we want you to re-look at the minimum font size since it has a long history of not having caused accidents and we don't believe it's appropriate.
You could, but I just would highlight that there is quite a cost to running a plan change process because of, you know, you have to do submissions, further submissions, you have to organise a hearings panel, you have to have hearings, you know. So, it would, we wouldn't do a new variation just for the election signs. What we would do would be to bundle it into the next job lot, I guess that would be going. So, we tend to do variations when you get enough or more, a significant enough change or, in this case, a number of smaller changes to make it worthwhile to go through the cost and expense. So, it could, it's certainly possible that there would be another bundled small changes at some time in the future, but it would delay that until that job lot was ready.
So, are you then saying that what we could do is approve the variation now, minus the minimum font size requirement, and simply leave that for another time when there were enough other variations that might come along?
Absolutely, in theory. I would think, though, that a more efficient process, my recommendation would be, a more efficient process would be to go ahead and notify it and then influence it through the submissions process because it is more cost-effective and efficient in terms of timing to get it open to submissions now, and then whatever final outcome gets done in a more timely way, and particularly given the next round of national elections. So, my recommendation would be that you wouldn't delay it.
I'm not suggesting delaying the variation, I'm suggesting voting for the variation exactly as everything is on the paper, except for getting rid of the minimum font size requirement.
Getting rid of that part of that?
Yes.
I think we could do that, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much for finally getting there.
Council Wylie.
Can I just clarify? Sorry, can I just clarify what you were asking? My understanding is that rather than in this variation include the solution that's being proposed, allowing that to be within the scope of the variation, so people could submit on font size, but we're not including the option that's being proposed. So, it would still allow that submission process to occur.
I think we're reaching a degree-
I maybe misunderstood what you were asking.
I think we're reaching a degree of technical and procedural questioning that wasn't anticipated for this paper, so I'm going to move that we take an adjournment for 10 minutes. Seconded, councillor Gary. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, that's agreed. We're back here at quarter past two? Two. Twenty past two. And just so people know, I'm going to move from the chair, the recommendations as circulated on the agenda. Seconded, councillor Staines. I still have questions. The questions, councillor Wylie.
Thank you, Your Worship. Question to staff over paragraph 2.56, 60 Mount Grand Road on one page 136 of the 148-page agenda. It's referencing high-class soils. And I'm just trying to get an understanding here, is anybody who wants to contest high-class soils, do they need to go and get their soils tested independently to be able to be withdrawn from the high-class soil register?
Well, in this variation, we're only specifically looking at this change, and the reason that this change is being made at this point is that the gentleman who owns this site, he did submit on the plan, but he was unable to provide the soil sample in time for decisions, and he supplied it afterwards. And so, because he was part of the process and that couldn't have been done at that time, it was included in this bundle of small changes. But certainly, in future, if other people wish to follow the same path, they can demonstrate that the, through soil testing. However, we would normally update the layer if we had new evidence, say, from land care, and given, at the moment, there's an NPS for highly productive land, it is likely that we will have to do some work around this in the nearest future to give effect to that NPS and possibly re-look at these layers.
Okay. Did many people contest the high-class soils through the early hearings and bring evidence that their soils had been zoned high-class and yet they were able to prove that they weren't?
Not to my recollection, no.
Okay. So, just getting clarification, then you do, are you telling me or explaining to me that in some cases you believe some areas may end up being classified as high-class soils and some areas may not remain on the high-class soil areas, zones?
I think what's more likely is that we get a different set of criteria altogether. So, the high-class soils is data that's given to us by land care, and the NPS for highly productive land is potentially going to open up a different terminology and methodology around what type of soils need to be protected, and that would mean that it could be slightly different criteria, which we'd have to do a whole new mapping layer to identify and, you know, and obviously have appropriate experts do that work.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Reddick. None? Okay. Council of Vandivers.
On page 101, it talks about minimum height restrictions within centre zones, and Mr Christos has made a recommendation there. My question is, why were the, why was the minimum height of six metres brought in in the first place, given that it creates so many problems? And are you happy that this variation that's proposed will actually deal with the problems? It just seems like a lot of a compromise to me.
Well, the reason why they have minimum heights is around look and feel generally, and to try to, maximum heights are generally about shading and wind. Minimum heights are more about having a consistent look and feel in a centre, it's about good urban design. I would have to go back and look at why it was originally proposed, I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but this was an example where consents were getting triggered and there were some questions being asked about the number of non-compliances with this standard, so we asked Peter to re-look at this, and he reassessed it and made this recommendation.
So, you're happy that the recommendation is, fixes a lot of the issues that the original idea raised and doesn't actually cause too much compromise in terms of the look and feel you're talking about?
Well, I'm confident that Peter is able to make a recommendation on this and he's got appropriate expertise to do so, yes.
Okay. If we look at the parking areas restrictions, there seem to be a lot of them, they seem to be very variable depending on what part of town they're in. There seem to be a very large number of requirements, and I'm wondering what actually is the, what's the justification for having so much restriction around the look and feel of car parks? Why are we doing this now?
Is this about, not the number of car parks, but the-
No, this is, you know, yeah, must be located behind or within a building, all these other issues that-
Sorry, what page are you on, councillor?
103.
103, oh, okay.
Location and screening of car parking. There's different rules for within a heritage precinct, there's, yeah, it just, I'm just wondering what the rationale is for. Is it a look and feel staff decision that has produced a lot of this legislation?
Well, the rules around look and feel are generally advised by the urban designers. In terms of parking at the front of buildings, it is both a look and feel issue in that people want to engage with an attractive building frontage rather than cars. There's also safety issues for pedestrians on footpaths, and having high pedestrian areas is generally, it's a conflict with people using those areas to have a lot of car parks and vehicle crossings in those spaces. So, there's two main issues that are being addressed.
Right, okay, so I can see where they're coming from in terms of what they're trying to do. Will this apply to new car parks or will it also apply to existing car parks? And I'm thinking as an example, the car park beside Chipmunks, which is very open and it's always been a missing tooth in Princess Street, a loss of the theatre there. Would these restrictions retrospectively apply then to that car park? Would owners of car parks generally have to comply to these new regulations?
But just to clarify, this variation is not adding any new regulations. What it's doing is removing a sort of a duplication and a confusion between how two rules overlap. It's not changing anything, it's not proposing to change it. So, if you read through sort of the problem statement and the scope of the variation, it outlines that, so the rest of the content is the existing content in the plan.
In the 2GP.
Yes.
But also, in direct response to the question, existing use rights would hold on a site that is being used for a current purpose regardless of what, unless there was an NPS or NES on car parking, which seems unlikely, which might trump that. So, any existing sites wouldn't be affected by any-
That was my question, so they wouldn't be? Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alder.
There are a number of amendments to the historic buildings, mainly related to external, and I was just wondering, in summary, is that about making it easier and simpler?
Which, can you direct me to the page number?
Like 19, I mean, the repairs and maintenance, et cetera.
Oh, that, so just highlighting that the vast majority of these changes are changes of clarification rather than substantive changes, and the, if you read through the summary, it will say whether it's a change of clarification or if it's a substantive change, it will include a section 32 analysis. With a lot of the heritage ones, they are clarifications. I'm just trying to find the change that you're referring, page 19, did you say?
Yes. It was just an overall question really about the minor changes and whether the intent is for making it easier for people with historic buildings to do work on their buildings.
I'm just reading through this one in particular, I think this one is a clarification. Yeah, so this is a, this is a change of clarification, so it's not making a substantive change in terms of making things easier. It is more, the, there's, the heritage provisions are potentially some of the more complex ones because they are trying to very delicately manage certain things and to restrict as little as possible to encourage reuse of heritage and to write the rules to very specifically capture the things of concern, so they are very complex provisions to get that balance right, to only capture the things that need to be managed through a consent process. And this is making some changes just to make them a little bit clearer, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? It's been moved and seconded. Any speakers? Councillor Vandivers.
This document claims to be minor changes to the 2GP, but it runs to 148 pages of problems and suggested solutions. One problem that we have around the table, taken 10 minutes off to try and get to the bottom of, is the one aspect of the new mini signage changes that are proposed in this document, and it turns out that our advice from staff is that we as supposed decision makers can't change that even by a tiny amount, we can't exclude it. The only thing that we can do is vote to pass this document to note it and then go ahead and submit at a later date, hoping to make changes which NZTA and staff will basically argue against again. As a supposed decision maker, I find that this whole process of the 2GP, in which so many new decisions and provisions were made without anyone being able to know about them, even people like me that were taking a reasonably keen interest, things have affected so many people in so many different ways, especially regarding zoning, especially regarding building, especially regarding the restrictions on building. especially regarding the restrictions on building. The restrictions that I brought up before about where you used to be able to build on 15 hectares, now you have to have 40. The restrictions on where you used to be able to build in places like South London, now it has to be relocatable. The restriction on having a granny flat, that you actually now have to have a family member in order to, to be able to build a granny flat. And I recognise that granny flat is, is an attempt to try and get a bit more infill as per the spatial plan. But all of these restrictions, none of them, I believe, have been able to be effectively counted by people that they severely affected. And I'd like to give you one example, and that is the farmer next door to me in Pigeon Flat. He had a farm that, under the old rules, under the district plan, he was able to build four different houses on because it had something like 60 hectares.
councillor Vandivers, I've been waiting for a while for this argument to wheel back around to the paper that's at hand.
Yes.
So I would appreciate it if you would restrict your remarks to the report that we are debating.
I believe that I am. I believe that I'm having to give an example of the powerlessness that ordinary people have in the face of these documents, this particular one, coming forward with massive of regulatory new detail in which they effectively have no say and have, in some cases, essentially halved what they've worked for their whole lives. And I'm speaking about the farmer next door that used to be able to build four houses on his property and now is allowed to build one and a half. So we have a situation where we are being asked here to vote for this particular amendment, 148 pages of staff-proposed solutions to largely 2GP-created problems. I believe that the 2GP process has been fraught. I believe that it hasn't been appropriately carried out and that this massive wad of amendments is just part of an attempt to try and sort out what should have been sorted out all, going all the way through. I recognise that under a plan, there will always be some problems and some things that need sorted, but to have so many of them and to have so little opportunity for ordinary people to actually have an, an effect or even a voice in major decisions that have very strong effects on their lives, I don't think has been a good process for the people that I represent. So whereas I can vote for this variation, having been told that basically we can't change anything in it anyway, I want to register strongly that I don't feel as an elected representative, I can look after the people that I'm supposed to represent because we are powerless in the face of what appears to be a bureaucracy rather than a democracy. Thank you for hearing me out.
councillor Wiley.
Thank you, your worship. I will be supporting this. I think at times some of the amendments are just simply clerical and some of them are a little bit more detailed. But I think the paragraph 17 is the one that really enforces why I can vote for this, is that it is a very, variation one will be notified for public submission on or before Wednesday, the 20th of November. So the submission period ends on Wednesday, the 18th of December. So people can submit on this and I think that is the key thing. And I think part of this discussion we've had around the table and questions we've had around the table have clearly highlighted that the community does need to take a little bit more interest in some of these variations and get engaged because there are obviously some things that even us around the table have conflicting or interesting interpretations of. So I would, more than anything, encourage many of the community to actually take heed of these variation one and submit on it.
Who are the speakers? There being, there being none, I'll put it and I'll have the vote taken by division, please.
councillor Barker.
Aye.
councillor Alder.
Aye.
councillor Gary.
Oh, sorry, withdrawn, sorry, my apologies. councillor Hawes withdrawn.
councillor Hulahan.
Aye, in the hope that people submit.
councillor Lefeso.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor Reddick.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Vandivers.
Aye, on the basis that staff say we have no choice anyway.
For clarity, a simple aye or nay would suffice in the vote. Thank you.
councillor Walker.
Aye.
councillor Wiley.
Yes.
councillor, oh, sorry, your worship.
Aye.
carried, 11-0.
Thank you. And that's the end of the public part of the meeting. As per the order paper, I'll move that council move into non-public for the reasons outlined in the agenda pursuant to the provisions of the local government and official, local government official information of Meteors Act 1987. Seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That's agreed.